Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, calling this meeting of the Board to order. I'd like to confirm that members and participated officials are present. So from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Kevin Mills.
Here.
Aaron Ford.
Here.
Steve Revellak.
Here.
And Sean O'Rourke is going to be joining us a few minutes late. From the town, Rick Valorelli and Vincent Lee, I believe, are both here.
Here.
And Kelly Lynam is here from the Department of Planning.
Here.
Okay. Is there the applicant here for 36 Surrey Road?
We are.
You are. Perfect. Thank you. And is the applicant here for 123 Westminster?
Yes, we're here.
Oh, wonderful. And then appearing for the comprehensive permit for 1165 R M S A V. Mary O'Connor, you're here?
Yes, Mr. Klein.
Excellent. Thank you. Paul Haverty, I see, is here.
You, Mr. Chairman.
And Marty Novar is here from Baker. All right.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't find my unmuted button.
I am. All right. Okay, so this meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during each public hearing. For this meeting, the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom app with online and telephone access as listed on the agenda posted to the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference, others are participating by computer, audio, or telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, your screen name, or another identifier. Please take care to not share personal information. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask you to please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. This chair reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. So we're starting this evening with agenda item number two, which is administrative item, the approval of minutes from the February 16th, 2021 public hearing. As this item relates to the operation of the Board, it will be conducted without discussion by the general public. The Board will not take up any new business, nor will there be any introduction of new information on matters previously brought before the Board. So the minutes were put together by, excuse me, Mr. Valorelli. I believe comments were received from myself and from Mr. Revellak. Were there any other comments or questions from members of the Board in regards to those minutes? Seen lots of shaking heads. With that in mind, may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hanlon. Okay, running down the list. Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
And Mr. Revellak.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Those minutes are approved. This brings us to item three on the docket, which is docket number 3648, 36 Surrey Road. Turning to the first public hearing on tonight's agenda, some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce the agenda item, I will ask the participants to introduce themselves and to make their presentation to the Board. I'll then request that the members of the Board ask what questions they have on the proposal. And after the Board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting to public comment. So with that, if I may turn to the applicant for 36 Surrey Road, if you please introduce yourselves and tell us what you'd like to do.
Hello, good evening. My name is Akash Shilindranath.
And I am Sandhya Prabhu.
We live at 36 Surrey Road. It's a beautiful house. It's a small house and we've lived there for, we've had it for about four years and we're looking to add an addition. It's a non-conforming lot. So we've requested a special permit to add an addition so that it gives us the ability to have an additional bathroom and some additional space. I'm sorry, I should introduce our architect. Isamu Kanda is with us. I am an economist and my wife's a financial trader. We would know nothing about the the details about zoning and requirements. So Isamu is our support here to help us with those questions that you might have.
Thank you. Hi. Should I go ahead and share the drawings on the screen?
Yes, please.
So this is the existing site plan.
Would you like us to present this?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. So yeah, the proposed addition is sort of shown in that shaded area. Again, this is a house we absolutely love to bits. We spent a year remodeling it when we bought it. And we don't want to move, so this is the only way we figured out a way to add a second full bathroom and an additional space in downstairs when our folks visit us back from India and they can't really climb up and down the stairs. So we need some space downstairs. And I don't know what that, that's the.
The existing plans. So then.
That's the basement.
Basement, new first floor.
Yeah, and this is the proposed addition on the first floor with a bathroom and then the den and bedroom. And then there is
Go up to the second floor.
Yeah, the second floor would be a loft space that joins the existing house right at the stairs.
Okay. And then this space here, is this open to below? Is that what this?
Yeah, it's open to below. And so.
Existing elevations? These are the proposed elevations. So the wall facing your adjacent neighbor has no openings whatsoever?
It'll have Isamu, I think it will have a window there, right, at the?
Correct. Yeah, the design was modified a little bit. We have added a small window, fixture window onto that side elevation.
At the first floor level or second floor level?
On the first floor level.
The first floor, okay. And then what is the height of the?
The total heights to the highest point of the new roof is about 32 feet.
So this is sort of a departure from the the look of the current house. I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit to the
Sure.
driving this.
Sure. So the existing house, it's a gable roof with dormers on the front and the back. So the side elevation is sort of like a book that's been sort of opening up. In adding a two-story addition on to this existing structure, our main goal, just for the integrity of the roof and the sort of protection from the elements, was to maintain a new roof line above the original roof so that we didn't have to interfere with any of the sort of intricate overhangs and sort of gable ends that are existing. So the logic being that if we sort of kept the heights high enough so we were above the existing roof, we could then maximize the get the proper sort of flashing protection that's needed.
Okay.
If I may just add, this is not an architectural thing, but just in the rear, which faces to the rear neighbor's house, there is a historic garage or a shed. And so there's nobody who lives there and we'd be facing that. Because it's south facing, it allows all the light to come and we're not infringing on anybody else's privacy, nor are we, you know, experiencing any privacy issues.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the existing facade has a certain sort of symmetry and logic from the front view from the street. And we, a couple iterations where we tried to mimic that or even extend that. And it sort of threw the overall composition off balance. And that's where we kind of landed with a, you know, sort of a more of an abstract box. So we don't necessarily compete with the existing structure.
And sort of color wise, how does it?
Color wise, we're proposing a darker vertical siding. That again, you know, the existing house is a horizontal platform. So sort of complementing that versus trying to sort of compete with it. And the idea is that this boxy volume recedes a bit when viewed from the street.
Have you had an opportunity to discuss it with your adjacent neighbor on that side?
Yeah. Yes, I've shared all the documents once it was posted. And I've had a conversation this morning as well.
Okay. Good. Then I have, the only question I have is a question for Mr. Valorelli. Because I think we had something similar to this come up on a prior project in East Arlington, where the addition comes out over the existing driveway. So it's you, to the the area of the driveway that goes past the side of the addition, obviously remains as it is. But the portion of the driveway that is now between the addition and the street is entirely within the front yard. And does that now no longer count as a parking space?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, the pre-existing non-conforming front yard would be at the very front of that existing porch.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I was gonna say, so essentially from the front edge of the, from the front of the porch to the street is what's considered the front yard in this case?
That's correct. And that was similar to the case we had in one of the East Arlington requests.
Okay. And in this case, obviously, that's not large enough for a vehicle anyways.
That's correct. That's consistent, correct.
Okay. Okay. I'll go ahead and open up to questions from the Board.
Mr. Mills. I'm just, I'm wondering about the minimum width of the, excuse me, the minimum width of the driveway. Is that legal, Mr. Valorelli?
So, Mr. Mills, they have to have 18 feet in depth and seven and a half feet in an existing condition for a legal parking space. I believe I went over this with the applicant at the time. There were a couple of issues that were coming close to not making it. And I believe he does have seven and a half by 18, may even have the required eight and a half by 18.
Yeah, we have, we have 10.
Correct.
Correct.
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mills. Other questions from the Board? Mr. Revellak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I took a ride by over the weekend. And one of, like, one of the questions I have is, normally for, or for parking in a residential in an R1 or an R2 zone, where the side yard is used for parking, we require a vegetated buffer. Now, the, what I can see, the, you know, the existing driveway, and it looks like there are some plants sticking, you know, sticking out of the snow, but is there an existing vegetated buffer on the, you know, the left side of the driveway as you face the property from the street?
May I, may I?
Please.
Yes, yes, there is. There are some evergreen shrubs. It's actually on our property, inside our property, but it acts as a buffer. Yeah, it's throughout the length of the property line up until the shed, existing shed.
Okay, thank you very much. And another question, and this might be for, this would be for Mr. Shilindranath. I hope I was at least close with that, or?
You got it right.
Oh, excellent. One of the things that I caught my attention about the, about the house was the facade underneath the front porch and the stairs. It's a little, it's a, looks sort of like a darker wood. Very much of an emphasis on horizontal lines. Kind of contemporary looking. And is that sort of what you were going after with the vertical, vertical paneling on the addition?
Yeah, that's right. That's, those are Douglas fir wood. We left it, you know, looking natural with some sealant. And it's just aged that way. We're going for something very similar on the proposed addition, but it'll have vertical. And Isamu, what do you call it? Post?
Vertical siding.
Siding, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I like it. It's, one of the things I thought it helped do was to sort of de-emphasize the, you know, the existing driveway and, you know, maybe center the building a little more on the lot. So it, it looks like, it, I like the, I like the proposed addition. I do have a little bit of a concern about you know, the wall on the left side of the addition where, you know, the plan Mr. Klein showed before didn't have any windows, but I guess you are planning windows at least. So I'm outside. Okay. That is all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Revellak. Further questions from the Board? None. I just go quickly flip it back. So this is the memorandum prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development in regards to this project. And just sort of quickly going through the criteria, the photographs, the recommendation of the Department of Planning and Community Development. The proposal is consistent with the bylaw recommends approval of the application. I will go back to the plan and I will I will now open up the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments will only be taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the Board for the purpose of informing our decision. Members of the public will be granted three minutes each. Additional time may be provided to the discretion of the Chair to provide time for questions to be addressed. Chair will ask members of the public who have identified themselves by logging in through Zoom. Who wish to speak digitally, please raise their hand using the button on the Participants tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the meeting host. Your audio will be unmuted and you'll be asked to give your name and address. You'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions will be addressed through the Chair. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed, or the time allocated by the Chair has ended, the public comment period will be closed. Board and staff will do our best to show the documents being discussed. So at this time, if there's anyone who wishes to speak to this application, if you could, please go ahead and using the Participants tab, raise your hand. This time, it does not appear that there is anyone who wishes to speak to this matter. Going once, going twice. And we'll close the public comment period on this hearing.
And if I, if I may, and this, yeah, this may be more directed to Mr. Valorelli. But in kind of going through this proposal with the potential builder, we did sort of think about structural ramifications of this addition as well. And so one idea which we sort of came up with was if this proposed footprint of the addition were to move back about a foot from where it's currently shown. So basically a foot further back from the front street. That would put the rear corner of the addition at a more favorable location potentially relative to the original foundation. And so if we were still able to maintain all the required setbacks without increasing any of the existing non-conformities, we were curious whether that modification would be able to be considered.
So I'm sorry, is this Mr. Kanda?
Yes, it is.
So that is something you'll have to address with the Board tonight because what they're going to approve or not approve is what's in front of them.
Okay.
No, any change, you may ask the Chair about that tonight. If it's enough, he may, may or may not let you go forward. But I don't have the authority to make any changes to a special permit application or a variance application.
Okay.
Essentially, are you asking to be able to shift the addition back so that the rear line of the addition aligns with the rear line of the house?
We would move it about one foot back so that it actually misses that rear corner, which we discovered there's a bit of old plumbing that goes in through that sill.
Oh.
So rather than sort of try to compromise what's existing, we'd rather sort of get one step behind it and put in a new foundation. Just to minimize any structural considerations later.
Okay. So the proposed, on the, on the site plan right now, the proposed addition is slightly back or slightly forward of the rear line of the house.
Correct.
If I can find the. Okay.
So the new.
So now it's, it looks like it's offset by seven and three quarters in front of that. So you would be looking to move it to be five and a quarter, four and a quarter on the opposite side?
Roughly six inches, actually.
Six inches, okay.
Yeah, so we can get a full foundation beyond the old foundation.
And that does not impact the the rear yard setback at all?
Correct.
Okay.
It is still more set back than the original rear of the house, based on the, you know, the angle that rears the lot.
Okay. And there's enough, and you'll maintain the 10-foot side yard setback?
Correct. And then on the front, I think where it says 19 foot three, that would grow to 20 foot three.
Any members of the Board have an issue with putting that in as a condition? Seeing none. So the Board has three standard conditions that we would impose on a special permit. One is that the final plans and specifications approved by the Board for this permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the Building Inspector of the Town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. There should be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. The second is the Building Inspector is hereby notified that he has monitored the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time deemed that the violations are present and the Inspector of Buildings shall proceed under Section 3.1 of the zoning bylaw under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 21D, and Institute Non-Criminal Complaints. If necessary, the Inspector of Buildings may also approve an institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with Section 3.1. And number three is the Board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit grant. Are there, and then as we've discussed, that the applicant shall shift the addition one foot to the rear such that it extends six inches to the rear and is maintained into 20-foot three front yard setback and a 10-foot side yard setback.
Correct.
Are there other conditions from the Board? Any other questions or comments on the Board? Okay. So where Mr. O'Rourke was not present for the, for the start of this hearing, I'm going to ask Mr. Ford if he would be willing to serve as a voting member for the purposes of this special permit. May I have a motion in regards to the special permit?
Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals approved the special permit, so to the standard conditions read out earlier. And the additional condition relating to the moving of the addition back by a foot.
Second.
Now, Mr. Dupont, for a second. Roll call vote on this. Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So the, the special permit is approved. It'll at our next meeting or soon thereafter, we will have the final written decision that we'll vote on at that time. At which point the decision will be permanent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And if there's anyone waiting in the waiting room, but I don't think so. The next item on the docket is a docket number three, six, four, nine, one, twenty-three Westminster Avenue. If the applicant can please introduce themselves.
My name is Gustavo Pardo.
Good evening.
I'm Tina Halfpenny.
Great to see you both. What is it you folks would like to do?
We want to build a greenhouse. But we've, we've asked for permission with respect to the variance.
So we got, we got, we got a we had a I don't know how far should I go here? And should I tell a little bit of background of what we, what we trying to do or?
Or should I bring up the drawings?
Okay. I did share a new set of drawings per your request yesterday, the day before yesterday. I hope you got them.
Start with, so this is the official application. And I believe this is the the information you sent most recently?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we're trying to, we're applying to build a greenhouse in our property. Our property is a historical home. And, and it follows the guidelines for the historical commission. So we did start building the frame last year in September and, and the historical commission told us that we needed to stop until we get approved from the historical commission. We did the whole process and, and they approved it on December seventeenth. There are some conditions in our site that it makes the location for the greenhouse to the location that we propose. So first, we're in a, our, our terrain has a really high inclination. And it has a series of retaining walls to provide some kind of flat surface, but there is no flat surface in the front of the house. Another condition that we have is that the historical, it's not historical commission, historical? Yeah, yeah, historical commission, they don't allow any structure that covers the front of the house. So if you go to the next slide, it will show different points of view from the street from, from Westminster and, and also the location of the retaining walls. So the only location that we can build the green, the greenhouse is on that corner. If we move, if you move a little bit towards the top of the site, the, the pitch gets, it will be pretty hard for us to, to build in that location. There is no light in the back of the house because we're at the end of the hill. So that's the only location that we could build our structure.
So this is the proposed location, which is 12 feet off the front.
Yeah, so it's, it's twelve, twelve, twelve hundred from and two six from the, from our neighbor.
From your neighbor.
So the greenhouse is 12 feet by eight feet. It has no floor, is, is on the ground. And the structure is, is a wood structure, wood structure is a wood frame construction. It's temporary and, and it's, the walls are polycarbonate.
And the height is eight feet? That was the drawing?
It's like, it's, it's going to be like eight, six to the top. To the peak, yes, like.
Well, we're going to put a little ridge across the top of it. So that'll be another three inches. But it's decorative.
And you had said that the, the reason it could not go up in this area is just, is the lack of sunlight is what you're saying?
But so there is a lot of conditions in the back. So we have a a iand rock. And also there is an existing shed in the back. And then after the shed, there is a, a small like walkway. And from the walkway to the first fence that you can see in one of the images that I sent is, I think the pitch is about probably four feet. There we go. So you can, in this image, you can see in the back of the house, the shed.
Yeah.
And then from that point to the fence, you know, it just goes all the way down. The crisis is pretty dramatic in that location.
And then is this area here, is this a patio? Is that what this is?
Yeah, that's, that's a back patio.
Okay. And then I don't know if you know, Mr. Valorelli may need to answer this question. So for a corner lot, the two sides that meet the street are both considered front yards. Then one of the sides is the back. And one is the side. And I don't know if that has been established for this property. Do you know, Rick? I'm assuming that, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, you go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm assuming that the side off of Westmoreland being tighter is considered the side and the, the one coming off of Westminster being wider is considered the back?
That's exactly right because the side coming off of Westmoreland would not qualify. It's too narrow. So in fact, they do have two front yards.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one, one of the points that the historical commission said is that the entrance over Westmoreland is considering our main entrance and we don't use the, the entrance over Westminster. I, I think since we've been here, we probably use it twice, maybe once. Not even, not even the male uses.
A lot, there's a lot of steps.
Yeah. So questions from the comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment.
Mr. Ford?
Question rather. How are you going to anchor it to the ground? I know you said it's temporary, but are you, are you, are you anchoring it in any way?
Yes, sir. So wind loads will be, will be an issue since this structure is so light. So it will have four sound tubes following, you know, guidelines and, and the frame has two, two by fours pressure treated and there's anchored to the sound tube.
Okay, great. That was it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. DuPont?
So I just wanted to have clarification as to what the classification of this building is because under the bylaw, it's not a shed. And I don't think it's actually a greenhouse either, strictly speaking, because I, I think if I didn't misread it, greenhouse has more of a commercial connotation. And if anybody knows that not to be true, please correct me. However, is this, and maybe Mr. Valorelli can speak to this, is this considered just an accessory structure on, in an R1 district and therefore it's permissible as a right?
Two, you're asking two questions, Mr. DuPont. So yes, it is considered an accessory structure. Couple of reasons, I guess we could say that it exceeds the seven feet in height.
Okay.
That's required to be a shed. To answer your second question, would not be allowed by right because it, it, it's within the front yard setback. To the best my knowledge, I think, like the chair said, it's 12 feet off the front lot line. I do not have the plot plan in front of me. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
That is correct.
So an accessory structure is not allowed in the front yard. It would have to be on the front yard setback as a minimum.
So I was maybe misreading this as well, but in the dimensional reference for an Arwin lot, it said accessory building and it said front. And I'm talking about the bylaws themselves. And I thought it said front 25 feet. And then side six and rear six. So I realized that the rear is not involved in this, but I was wondering, because I think if we're granting a variance, we have to know specifically which section we are granting the variance from. And I just wanted to make sure that that was established clearly.
Okay, I believe we're in section 5.3, point one, three.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Revolak. Yes, I read, I, my interpretation was that this would be a, you know, an accessory structure greater than 80 feet. And it is in the dimensional tables when we get to the, the, yeah, right there.
So this would be considered an accessory building or a garage structure with a front yard set, required setback of 25 to the front, six to the side and six to the rear?
That's what I was looking at.
Mr. Valorelli, is that, do you concur?
It's, the plot plan is saying R1. So if in fact it is an R1, yes, 25 feet.
Okay.
That's all. I just wanted to make sure that if we were to grant this, we're going to say that we're giving relief from these specific dimensional requirements.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board? Seeing none. I will open the, this hearing to public comment. So again, as the public who wish to address the board will be granted three minutes each. If you wish to speak, you can digitally raise your hand using the button on the participants tab in the Zoom application. And if you're calling in by phone, you may dial star nine to indicate that you would like to speak. If there, if there's anyone who wishes to address this topic, this is 123. Believe it's coming with his hand up, Mr. Wisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, please. Name and address to the record and.
My name is Paul Wisner. I live at 115 Westminster Ave. I'm the property owner of the property line nearest the greenhouse. So I just wanted to express my enthusiastic support for the greenhouse and I really liked the structure and I enjoyed watching Gustavo and Tina build it with their children all, over the summer. It was really a delight and I was heartbroken when I heard there, there might be a problem. So that's all.
Oh, thank you. Other ques, other comments in the public? Going once, going twice? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment. Okay, so back to the board. So this is an application for a variance. And as such, the criteria is different than it would be for a special permit. So the criteria for a variance are established under, in state law under chapter 40A. And there are four criteria and all four have to be met. And so the first one is the circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, topography, which especially affect the land or structure in question, but which do not affect generally the zoning district in which the land or structure is located that would substantiate the granting of a variance. And so this is the criteria, this is the statement from the applicant. I'll just go through the other ones and then we can discuss them together. So criteria number two is a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance related to the circumstances affecting the land or structure in question would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. Number three is how desirable relief, relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And how desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning by law of the town of Arlington.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Mr. Hamlin?
I don't have any difficulty with the first and the last two of the conditions. It seems to me that the problem here is related to the topography of, of, of the site and which makes it exceedingly difficult for the applicant to do what he wants to do consistently with the demands of historic preservation, which was also an important town policy. It also seems to me that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. It's a temporary structure. It's been approved by the historic commission. I'm persuaded by Mr. Wisner that it would be a favorable addition to the neighborhood. And for the same reason, I don't think that it would nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. So I skipped over number two, which asks to describe how the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. And I wanted to have something of a discussion there. Ordinarily, we would not rule that there is a substantial hardship merely because an applicant would be prevented from doing what the applicant wants to do. And I'm not really quite certain how we could articulate what the special hardship is other than that. And so I would welcome anyone who has a good theory about that.
Members of the board? They might know, I also don't have a particular issue with the siding of it. I think it works. I think it's actually, you know, rather sort of attractive where it sits because the change in elevation, it sort of sits up and it's a little bit, it feels like it's farther back than it is because of where there, where it's been framed so far. But the the variance is really there to allow you to do something that you couldn't do otherwise. And I'm sort of struck that if the unfortunately, if the applicant really wanted to locate the greenhouse legally behind the, you know, 25 feet back and six feet off of the line, it does appear there's plenty of space up at the top of the site to do so, even though that area is currently a shed or currently a patio. And that, you know, it would be a hardship for the applicant to, to lose some of that space to the greenhouse. But would it be, would it be sufficiently substantial to support the granting of a variance?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I actually sort of like that theory. You know, substantiality is sort of, one, varies somewhat with the circle. You know, substantiality is sort of one varies somewhat with the circumstances. Building a major structure here. Might very well require a higher showing of substantiality than the kind of temporary structure that. That is envisioned. And so. You know, in deciding what is substantial, I think that we have to take into account the context. And. I think this is otherwise sufficiently in the public interest that I think I would be prepared to to do that.
We do have.
The nature of the the nature of the problem is that in order to in order to do something else, in order to comply. You have to essentially eliminate the patio area there and it makes a. It would be certainly a major impact on the value and livability of the house, which seems unjustified. By the purpose to be obtained.
So we. The Department of Planning and Community Development issued a memorandum on this property. So in regards to the to the variance criteria. They agreed that the there are limited areas where an accessory structure could be constructed without increasing or creating a nonconformity. On a criterion number two. The the combined factors of site topography existing retaining while it's current citing at a principal structure and the requirements. Of the. Historic District Commission restrict the applicant's ability to locate the accessible structure elsewhere on the property. The applicant is unable to both comply with the requirements. Of the Historic District Commission and those of the zoning by law. That the relief couldn't be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. It was nonpermanent, could be easily removed. In the future without damaging the property or harming adjacent properties. Furthermore, the district commission has. Reviewed the proposal and deemed it appropriate for the site in its historic context. And criteria for a desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purpose of intent. Proposal complies with definition purposes in the intent of the R1 single family zoning district. Some additional photographs. So you can see here's the. Houses that currently sits and this is the. The framing for the greenhouse here on the side. Yeah, so that's better. When the recommendation of the Department of Planning and Community Development is that the Board of Appeals approve of the application. So then the question before the board is, does the application. Meet the requirements of the four criteria? Are any further questions or comments from the board on those? Seeing none. Mr. Hannah, would you recommend? Going point by point to the four points for findings, or should do you think we're fine just going straight to a vote?
I think. We're fine going straight for a vote. I'd like to. I would like to make a motion and and state specifically that the finding on. Number two is the way in is sort of a combination of the way. The planning department articulated it and the. Definition of substantial hardship that you submitted. In your response to my original comment.
Okay. Unless there's further comments from the board, I'll go ahead and have Mr. Hamlin make his motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission approved the variance in this case. Finding specifically that number one is met for the reasons stated in the planning commission for the playing division report. That number two is met for that reason and for the additional reason that in order to locate the greenhouse in an area. In in an area where it would be in. Literal compliance with the zoning ordinance would require. Either that would require the sacrifice of the patio area and. And other areas that are currently important for the use of the house. That third and fourth, this is subject to. That this is without detriment to the to the public good. And does not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning law. Again, for the reasons that are articulated by. The planning department.
And that that would hold for that's for both criterias three and four?
Yes.
You have a motion in front. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. And Mr. O'Rourke has been with us this time, so I will go ahead and include him in the vote. Going down.
Do you want me to abstain just to keep it consistent and you know?
That's fine. You are you are. Certainly here before the start, so. I thank you for that. Mr. Dupont.
Hi.
Mr. Hamlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. O'Rourke. Sorry, Mr. O'Rourke, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The chair votes aye. The motion is approved. So the board will prepare a final written decision to be voted on by the board. At the our earliest. Next meeting and at that point, the decision will be final. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Chairman, just one question. So we cannot do anything until until next vote?
Um, Mr. Valerelli?
That that's correct, Mr. Chairman. They can't proceed until the decision is written.
Okay.
And and that will be.
So we're anticipating that. So we have a meeting scheduled for. March 11. So we're anticipating that we would vote on the decision at that point. Let's see here. Do I have another? Another lawyer? No, March 11th is the next scheduled meeting of the. Of the board.
And I think, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I I believe that this will will be ready by March 11.
Okay.
I do note, Mr. Valerie, Meli can comment on this. There's there's a period after that vote. Where the decision has to be filed as well. And so you have to just sort of wait for that process to take its course, but it's relatively quick.
That's correct, Mr. Hammond. So Gustavo, you are realistically looking at April 11 to be on the safe side, possibly a little bit before.
I'm sorry, you say April 11?
Yes, a little bit before.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we we cannot do anything in the in the structure until they put it there.
That's correct.
Hey. Thank you all. Go back to the agenda. This brings up. Socket item number five. Which is a comprehensive permit for 1165 R Massachusetts Avenue. So we are now turning to the comprehensive permit hearing for 1165 R Massachusetts Avenue. Some want to review the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. This evening's discussion will focus on architectural and site layout. The submitted documents are available as an attachment to the posted agenda. I'll ask the applicants to introduce themselves, make a short presentation to the board. A fuller introduction was made at the January 5th hearing and need not be fully repeated at this time. Members of the board will then have an opportunity to ask what questions they have on the information that has been presented. And after the board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. So with that. Ms. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. As previously mentioned at the January hearing. This project was designed to incorporate the goals and objectives of the master plan. The town's housing production plan, the open space and recreation plan and the Millbrook corridor study. You will hear about that tonight. Since that meeting, I have supplied. The board with a letter dated February 16, 2021, addressing certain. Information that was requested by members of the board and the public. And that included shadow studies, tree locations, rider street issues and the like. This evening, Joel Bargman of BKNA Architects will review the design. And provide information as to the site and architectural design and Kyle Zick will address the landscape design for the site. Specifically, the subjects of rider brook. Pedestrian, bicycle and vehicular access and safety, parking ratios, stormwater management, wetlands. The riverfront aspects of the and the riverfront aspects of the project will not be addressed. As the subjects are slated for subsequent hearings. So I I'd like to introduce Mr. Bargman, who's the lead architect on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just sharing the screen and. Checking to see if you can see that now.
We can. There's a way to make it. Put it into more of the presenter mode, I think. There we go.
And thank you for having us. I appreciate the opportunity. As you requested, um. Try not to repeat what we discussed last time. I have. Good notes, we think, from our team and we put together a presentation to address the particular. Questions that were raised and and fill in the blanks. Just as a summary of the project. Again, it's a total of 140, 381,000 square feet. The residential portion of that is 107,000 square feet. And then there's two levels of garage. You'll see on the site plan that the. 90 plus percent of the parking is in the garage. We have 11 surface spaces. In 124 garage spaces for a total of 135 spaces on site. 114 bike spaces inside and that is a topic I'd like to discuss later in the proposal. Presentation tonight to show you how we're parking those and and counting those. The breakup of the units had been asked for at the last meeting. You have 31 studios, 56 one bedrooms, 32 bedrooms. And 13 three bedroom apartments for a total of 130 apartments. Of which 33 are affordable, 97 are market rate apartments. This is in the category of housekeeping a little bit. I think there was a question and maybe a lack of clarity on our exhibit last time. The yellow area is the site area. Taking on an aerial view. That's the site area for the 40B project. The ownership owns work bar, which is this site not in yellow, but that's not part of the. Application to the zoning board of appeals. What this little sidebar is showing is maybe I didn't explain it that well last time is. The applicant owns half of Rider Street as it extends. Up to Forest Street from the Rider Street extension that comes into the site. Just for clarity, this is a. Diagram of the entire parcel. And then you can see this light blue line is the. Subdivision. Of the parcel for work bar that's been removed. The reason we're showing this. Overall diagram is the red line indicates the. Area of the mill complex and those red lines are important because some of the. Topics that will come up particularly next week with regards to wetlands. Are different for sites that are mill sites because obviously they were built. In proximity to wetlands, ponds, streams and Millbrook. And so the state regulations have addressed that and this exhibit is really to make clear. What portion of the site. Is in red is the. Mill complex site and then the black line that extends out. The other portions of the site that are on, including the extension out to Mass Ave. And that's an aerial photograph that just shows that same map with the current. Site conditions. We were asked at the last meeting to sort of go through the site plan, which. I did and I won't repeat that other than to just give a quick overview for. Any members that are new, the one entry is between. A work bar and what's called building two. Comes off of Mass Ave, call that the Mass Ave connector. Is into a courtyard and you can see the 11 spaces that are surface spaces. Are these spaces in the courtyard. All other spaces are underneath the building. But that. Plan does is it. Increases the the pervious area of the site. And by putting the parking underneath the building, we're able to increase. Green space on the site by 18,631 square feet or approximately 72%. Of the green space that's there is increased by that amount of square footage. You see on the overall site plan, there is some bio-swell work and. That that has to do with burning existing. Runoff from the parking lot to the north and. Kyle Zick, the landscape architect and Bowler, our civil engineer, will get into that. Topic in great detail next week at the next session, sorry. To clarify access, we have traffic coming in from Massachusetts Ave. On the portion that's owned by the applicant, I showed in that initial map. Between the Hyundai dealership and the. A butter's property, the attorney's office. That's entry in. You're widening the road between building two, which I'll explain and work or so that's a two way. Traffic over the bridge in this yellow area, the drop off and then one way traffic out Rider Street and back forest. The traffic can exit out and to Quinn Road in this direction as well. The traffic comes in only off of Mass Ave. What's interesting is that. We talked in great deal about the Millbrook last time and I didn't really talk that much about. Circulation path runs along Millbrook. You can see that this is the rider. Street extension that connects into Rider Street and then out to Forest. Here's our main courtyard and on the right is the bridge. This happens to be most accessible from a. Accessibility from a MAAB perspective. Our path along the Millbrook is flat and controlled, whereas. You can see in the perspective that grade starts to go up in this direction. So. One of the advantages of improving this walkway is not only to connect to the neighborhood and and to. Enhance the. Stormwater management at the edge of the Millbrook, but it's also provides us our accessible path. For pedestrians of the project. I mentioned the entry into the site and right now I was showing this pathway on the right. This is a view coming down that road. This happens to be a handicapped accessible path. So all of the buildings within the complex work are new buildings, building one. Are all on an accessible path system. With grades that comply with the MAAB requirements. The entry road is now made wider and I didn't really show this drawing last time. The entry road is now made wider, and I I didn't really show this drawing last time. Um, currently, it's it's in fifteen feet wide, and it next down to ten feet at the bridge, and it's ten-foot four clearance. So it's it's obviously not conducive to uh emergency vehicle access. So the plan is to remove this portion of the project, widen out that road to twenty-two feet, and have clear, unobstructed overhead condition to get into and out of the site for fire, police, and uh MT vehicles. I I'm not going to dwell on this. I just want you to know that if there were some questions about site history, we do have a chapter and can talk about the site history if any questions come up. But in the interest of time, I'll I'll jump over that. Would like to review existing buildings because there was some uh discussion, uh especially in the Q and A section, open discussion after the our presentation about the buildings that are being maintained or restored versus not. Um, this is the work bar building. This is the passageway in. Building Two is the three-story wood building. Building One is the brick building and the engine room and building three, four, and five. I mean, three and five are these your portions. I'd like to just walk around the site and explain um properties. The big picture is that five of the older or the historic buildings in the complex have been or will be preserved and adaptively reused in this um project when it's all finished. Um, there are three smaller buildings in the back portion of the engine room that are being removed. And there's also a relatively nondescript twentieth-century infill that's being removed. And I wanted to make sure that we're clear what's being kept. This is Building One. This is being restored. The the ground floor has actually got new windows. New windows are in the building, ready to be installed, that match these ground floor windows. So Building One will receive new windows, brick treatment, and interior restoration. But there will not be a major change to the outside of the building. That's a really a pure um restoration project. There is a addition onto Building One, which is the building on the right. And elements to the left of that dashed line are being removed. There's this new loading dock that represents an accessibility issue because that and a portion of the floor that goes into the building is raised three and a half feet entering that area, uh not accessible. And then you can see there's some new additions on the back side that um are uh garage and utilitarian in nature. Just when this portion comes off, I mentioned that Building One is restored. That's the condition that it's restored to. This is the white line where the um building is being removed. It becomes the new entry to the project. And then the new amenity space and apartment building is behind that. Okay, here's the corner. I mean, I jumped a little bit fast. This goes up and then turns the corner at this point. So this twentieth-century garage is one of the elements that is being taken down. It's not of historic value, obviously. Um, that twentieth-century garage, it's into the back of two garage structures that have been adapted over time with overhead doors. Um, this is another view of those two structures, one garage, this is Building Five. These two structures are being taken down along with the twentieth-century uh garage. At this point where the slide runs off, the right is all interior garage space, nothing of historic value. In fact, there aren't windows, and um it's in fairly poor condition. The end of this building, so I just I've just walked you on the key plan around the site to this corner. Um, this is the engine room, which is an important space to the complex and is a two-story space actually inside. Um, it's quite a nice room. It's been adapted. The windows have been filled in. The wall has been painted. It really has some merit. You can see it's the one building that has big windows, has architectural detail. So this portion of the building is being stored. And my my point is that we're taking off some of the buildings that don't really have high value from a development side or historical side, and focusing our energies on restoring the buildings that really have value and can uh add value not only to the complex, to the public way that we discussed in detail at the last session. This sort of public access park comes along the new Millbrook walkway. And the engine room is on your right. You can see the beautiful windows that were there that were covered in. And then the wall is painted over, so we're gonna do some work to restore that building. And then we're taking out this portion of the garage, and that will be replaced with a new link, and then the apartment building seen back another fifty feet from that. Um, this is to show the engine room building and the public access phase, the green space that's created by elimination of this element that really is uh not of use to the development. And further, it it obscures two floors of windows in the beautiful corner of Building One. So it its removal enhances Building One. I do want to talk about Building Two in a little bit greater detail because um there was discussion about Building Two. Building Two is the one on the south side of Millbrook. It's a three-story building. It's in extremely poor uh condition. This is backside um above the Millbrook. You can see the windows are rotted. The siding is coming off. It's in uh poor condition. It's been added on to over time. This is an addition for a garage. Was added over the Millbrook, and I'll discuss what that's caused in a second. You can see there's a opere of uh brick, aluminum siding, architectural intrusions on the fabric of that building. So we have corrugated metal. We have hollow metal doors. Um, a lot of different things have happened to this building over time. What we're proposing to do is remove exactly this section so that that opens up the Millbrook and allows that public access and private access through there to the to the new courtyards I showed in that last slide. So this is sort of subtraction, giving us a substantial addition to the project. But moreover, and the building is built over the Millbrook. Um, what we found is the foundations of this building are in extremely poor condition. And there are two reasons for it. One is the moisture that gets trapped by the fact that the building's built over the Millbrook. And then two, the fact that the building um was originally designed to be lower than the current site grades. Its current site grades are three feet above the existing foundation. And over the, you know, many, many years that this grade has been raised, um, snow and water have collected in that area, and this foundation is in extremely poor condition. The grade uh timber is in very poor condition, and we would really need to be taken out and replaced. Um, the new building fits in the footprint of the old one, but it fills in that edge. And um it's rid of this sort of odd condition, which is actually not that safe of a condition. Makes it difficult to get in, but the the big problem for us is it it's created the um weather problem for the foundation. Inside Building Two, ceiling heights are uh below what's allowed by code. This is a not a six-foot-eight door, which is the minimum door height that's allowed. The six-foot-four or height, the bottom of the beams is about six-foot-eight. You can see the the space is used for storage and other types of functions. But the structure is very lightweight. Um, to use this building um would require it to be rebuilt because the code simply would not allow habitable space with these low ceiling heights if we renovated it. And the renovations that would be required for this building would total more than thirty percent of the assessed value of the building, which would trigger full code upgrade and compliance. So we have a bit of a catch-22 with this building, and that uh in summary or in length, I should say, is the reasons for why Building Two is is slated to be rebuilt on the existing footprint. Um, we were asked on numerous occasions to present shadow studies. Um, we have shadow studies for uh spring. This is the March twenty-first um spring equinox. So at nine AM, blue shadows are shadows created by the new construction. Black, dark gray are the shadows that are existing today. Um, but really, the only shadows that send themselves in the direction of uh butters uh that are residential butters are those in the morning, and the sun's on the east side of the building, and the shadows are projected on the west side. And um even late afternoon, there's very minimal shadow. You can see in the lower right court portion, very minimal shadow cast on the auto detailing line that's next door to Building Two, which is where my cursor is. Uh, the summer conditions, obviously much better because the sun is in higher point, although at six PM, now going later in the day, um because I'm trying to give a a worst case for a um late afternoon, early evening sun. Um, again, there's some shadow cast from Building Two. It's not new shadow. Um, any shadow on the abutter is an existing shadow from where uh cast by Building Two today. October, um just missed the industrial building on the edge of Ryder Street. And then you can see it, there's shadow cast under the parking lots, but again, not nothing to a butter properties. Uh, December, um, you know, at this point, at nine AM on December twenty-first, the sha- the sun is very low in the sky, and the shadow cast uh does hit um the edge of Ryder Street. Only in the morning, then by uh ten o'clock, that sh- the su- sun is high enough in the sky that it comes back. And twelve noon, we have relatively uh unobstructed shadows. And then in the afternoon, um, the sun sets around four on this day, so we we took three o'clock. And you know, virtually uh um at that time, the sun again is very flat. Presents a strong shadow across the parking lot. Um, very quickly here, we were asked to, what are the amenities inside the building? As you go in the building, there is a uh a conference area for leasing. This very nice package areas. It the complex is really designed for getting all those packages in those vehicles out of the way of daily traffic and the presenting traffic jam. So we have a vehicle drop-off for FedEx, UPS, and a place for them to bring their packages in without coming into the lobby and make that trip really quickly. We have a lobby that's sort of an interesting combination of new and old. You have very strong connections of the lobby to our outdoor spaces. The building is a combination of industrial past and uh taking advantage of woods and woodworking, sort of in sort of homage to the Schwab um millworking company that was there after the piano case factory left. This is a paradigm image of what we can do to the engine room and shows why we excited about um focusing energy on the engine room, which is a two-story space. We looking for artifacts to display um and enhance in the lobby. Um, sort of again, that the amenity space will include some activity spaces for residents and a full gym. And it's again, a combination of new and old that we think is conducive to the property. Um, the property is um, call it episodic industrial architecture. And in other words, industrial architecture evolves over time. And this is the private courtyard. I've shown you all the public courtyards. This is the amenity courtyard that connects to the main lobby. And it really sort of shows you that episodic architecture is continuing on with our new project, that we have Building One, existing historic building. You have a connector element that's corrugated aluminum. We have a new building, and each one is treated a little bit differently. And that brings me close to the end where you had wondered what the materials were on the building. And we'll go around the building very quickly. This is the corner where we enter the parking garage. Um, so it's the westerly corner of Building Four. This is Building One, the brick building. That's our entry. So we have a combination of for fiber cement panels, which are high-quality, um, very durable and maintainable. We have high-density wood fiber cement that defines the base of the building for the amenity spaces located. This is a blow-up of the entry portion of the building, and you can see where the wood portion of the building is, where some of the metal and fiber cement panels are the entry. Then go up three stories and have a little reveal in the fifth uh well, four-story residential on the two-story garage sort of set back with a Mansard-type treatment on the roof. That's the dark fiber cement. Similar treatment to the rear of the building, again, fiber cement siding. The connector building that I showed is this ribbed metal. So again, it's that sense of episodes of architecture over time. Um, different buildings are different materials and make interesting architectural connections, including Building One, too, which is a different color, has a different window style, and different treatment of the fiber cement. I know it's hard uh to present this. What we've done on other projects is have physical samples that we would be happy to leave at Jennifer's office or any other office in town, and we could have these all eight-and-a-half-by-eleven drawings. And anybody that wanted to see the physical samples um from the board could go and see those physical samples. I mentioned in the beginning, I'll do bike storage. We have an amenity bike room that has forty-two bikes. We have a garage bike room that's storing seventy-two bikes. And it's this is a total of a hundred and fourteen bike spaces in the garage. You have outside racks for twenty-two spaces. What we are proposing is to use this bike system, which is in a project of ours nearby. It's a stacking system that allows us to get more bikes per square foot. It's a very popular system because um these racks very easy to load bikes onto. And the amenity bike room includes lower-right image of bike repair facility. I wanted to mention that we are showing a hundred and fourteen bike spaces. Those bike spaces matched the true definition of a bike space per the zoning ordinance or the planning requirements for Arlington. We would only be showing forty-four um bike spaces. So this is one of the um waiver requests that we're seeking. Um, if we didn't do the stacking bike system here, we also do this vertical stacking system. And we haven't counted it in our space, but the residents have two options. Um, a certain number of spaces in the garage will have storage bins over the parking spaces. And a certain number of spaces um may have extra storage uh racks so that folks that have a rented garage space and uh choose to additionally have their spaces that we have not counted. and choose to additionally have their spaces that we have not counted in the bike space. But lots of people like to have the bike stored where they park their cars. So if they go out on to Lexington or Lincoln or Concord and ride back in, it's easy to load the bike up. Sustainable design. In closing, the site gets some significant credits. And we understand that we will be doing a lead checklist as part of the submission for a building permit. But we have a very sustainable site from the making the pedestrian and the access to public transportation on either the bike path to Ale Life or the bus traffic to Ale Life. Some of the principles that the project is looking at and included in the package you have are the closure of the building, not only the insulated enclosure, which is continuous exterior insulation. But the excessive amount of daylight, we are maxing out the amount of windows that we can get with the new energy code, really enhance the daylighting for apartments and amenity space. And we have really excellent mechanical ventilation, which, as you can imagine, is important in the post-pandemic era. And we'll be utilizing low emitting materials throughout that envelope. Building principle is to target a low-carbon footprint by achieving the prescriptive savings that we can achieve through the new energy code. And we will have an energy model that's submitted with the ISD submission to the building department. Indoor water use is hugely important. I'll show you a chart in how we're planning to really bring this factor down. Not only in the building, but on landscaping with either having no irrigation or very high management of irrigation system. Will be some EV charging stations in the garage as well, in addition to the bike storage. I'm not going to go through all the strategies, but the indoor water use that I mentioned, I would come back to. Between the low-flow and the low-flush plumbing fixtures, we're targeting a thirty-five percent reduction potable water use. We will have an active construction management waste management plan for a great deal of waste materials generated in the construction process. So that's very important plan as part of the construction management plan. I think I mentioned the bikes, the connectivity, rainwater management, and we'll talk more about rainwater management next week, next session. As I mentioned, we have a high-performance building envelope with continuous exterior insulation and roof insulation. So we're really targeting a low-energy and light carbon footprint. And just showing sort of what our target will be for where we're trying to achieve that thirty-five percent reduction in water usage. Then in site selection, site design strategies, we have a really depth potential credits that will be applied to that checklist that I mentioned, we would understand we will apply with our building permit. Including the stormwater design quality control, stormwater design, removal of solids, heat island effect, and items that we'll get into in greater detail with our site discussion. So appreciate being able to get into detail. And with that, I will stop the share and open it to questions and other comments you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, I had a couple of questions which I'd like to go through quickly and then turn it over to the others on the board. The existing chimney that's in the near where the engine room is, is that being maintained or is that chimney going away?
Chimney is not being maintained.
Could not tell if it was attached to the building or not, but it's farther back.
It's not attached to the engine room. It's attached to one of the subsequent garages behind us. It's in very poor condition. It's, we need a tremendous amount of work to be brought up to seismic code requirements. And it's sort of in the way of our project. But we have had it looked at by two structural engineers because we wanted to be sure about its condition and
So what portions of the site are open for the public to go through and which parts are private?
Okay, let me go back to that screen share here. And pardon me to get back to the top. The walkway connects to Ryder Street. So this walkway along Ryder Street's public access is along the Millbrook. The main courtyard continues. That's open to the public. And then we're removing that portion I mentioned, the corner of Building Two, which allows us to extend the walkway. And then this is all, this area is all open to the Millbrook path. What is not open to the public is this rear amenity space. This is the lobby and this is the amenity courtyard. Purposely put that there because the building really provides privacy for the residents, but the noise that's in there is shielded from the abutters by distance and by the building. So that was the purpose for putting our private space there. What's green here is all public. And I will just go back to the rendering and make sure I cover that. So this is coming through between Building One and Building Two. That's the public access. And this is the one garden. And that's the second garden. That's the Millbrook pathway.
And the pathway, it appears the pathway essentially ends at that point because there's no connection as of yet with the adjacent property owner.
That's correct. And we understand that Arlington's anxious to make other connections, so we're hoping that'll develop over time.
So of the, if you could go, sorry, if I can have you.
I didn't mean to get out, sorry.
If you go back to the earlier plan with the red boundary and the green boundary for the property. So the, the landowner obviously owns these properties. Do they own any of the adjacent parcels? Or are they under different ownership? Okay.
They own the workbar parcel.
Right. Okay. So for workbar, so work, the workbar presently has these two sort of diagonal structures that go out across the the river there. What are those?
That's correct, yes. I think we show those.
What are they? Are they just struts?
Actually, utilities, the utilities are all on the north side of Millbrook. So that building's always connected over that way. Those are not new. Those are existing and those have been there.
No, no, I do, they were there. I wasn't quite sure what their purpose was.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's the utility.
And the, on the site plan, it looked like there might be some kind of a wider piece going across? That wider white stretch there? Or is that just where there, is that something?
There's a little structure there right now.
Okay.
That's existing, yeah. The new piece is this gray square here, which is the new bridge.
Okay. And then the first floor cladding for Building Two? Is that, are you looking to do that with the, again, with the cementitious siding? Or is that, are you looking at doing that in metal?
Yeah, the first floor of Building Two is the cementitious, although there is a masonry base that comes down here. That's a good point. These are not cementitious. These are those are either high-density fiber cement or metal columns. Those, because that wouldn't be.
It just sort of, from a some sort of a, you know, tectonic perspective, it sort of feels you know, very modern in a way that the rest of the site isn't. And it sort of feels a little bit, a little bit of a high, high degree of a juxtaposition against the, you know, the older brick that used to be, that, you know, was in the surrounding buildings. And, you know, I think that the cladding on the upper floors does a good job of going back to the cladding that, you know, is on that existing building today. I'm just just to encourage you to think a little bit more about sort of that, that metal cladding and whether that is sort of the appropriate appearance or not.
Yeah, okay, that's a valid point. We'll certainly take a look. I did, didn't really mention that one of the reasons we have that arcade, I mean, I think it softens up that edge nicely. But it's also, that provides the accessible path for the, the rear entry to the building and the fire stairs and other things on the building, so that we're able to get this
I like the feature. It's just that it's the cladding. It's the only.
Yeah, okay, that's a point well taken. Thank you.
And then the only other question, I think you've sort of half addressed it too, is in regards to the bike storage. The Arlington zoning by law requires that bike storage not be required to lift the bicycles into the whatever location. But I believe you had said that you are providing the required number of spaces at floor level, and it's only additional spaces that are going to require lifting?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't, I said that we're, even with the lifted stations, we are providing one hundred and fourteen bike spaces. And we're not meeting the code requirement for bike parking. So that's one of the waiver requests.
Okay.
But I will say that I know you have the regulation, that project I showed is a project of ours. Almost everything we do is two-story bikes and it's very popular and it the bikes are so light, we really have not had complaints on that system. But I did have the picture showing the vertical option, which is allows you to get more bikes in. But is an easier system than the stacking, although we find folks like the stacking quite well. You can do a vertical stacking as well.
Okay. And what, what is the requirement under code for numbers?
One point five per apartment, which would be one hundred and ninety-five bicycles. So it's, it's a onerous amount of space that we would be required given the number of bikes and in the square footage that's required for each bike.
Very good. Thank you. Other members of the board? Mr. Revellak.
Just a few questions regarding bicycle parking. The fixtures or the racks that you showed, the, you know, over/under, how high is, how high is the top level?
You can see it's a handlebar height lower. So it's three and a half feet.
Now, were you considering any, devoting any spaces for larger bicycles such as cargo bikes?
We have space in the building, so that if we wanted to have cargo bikes, there's, there is an end space in each of our, either the amenity bike room or the garage bike room where you could have a cargo bike.
Okay. And finally, what about facilities for charging electric bikes?
That's another quickly developing target. We could definitely have those. My, my experience has been on our projects that folks don't like to charge the bikes in the bike room because it's too easy to get that battery removed. So I, my experience at least has been people take the bike charger up to their apartment. And at least on the, you know, on the, on the ones where the battery is easily removable, which is on the, you know, on the power assisted bikes, not the power run bikes. That's the norm. I guess if it's a power run bike and not a power assist, then you would have a secure battery. And we could have some EV stations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bargman.
Members of the board? Mr. Mills?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had a question about the main power. They were talking about a main furnace or an energy efficient furnace. Is that true, sir?
Are you referring to the apartments?
Yes.
The, there isn't actually a furnace in the apartments. What we're using is high-efficiency hot water heaters generate instant hot. So they're not running constantly. They're only on demand. And then that on-demand system produces a high-intensity heat stream that goes to a coil and that coil then heats the air. So we only are during, the furnace is only on when it's on demand. And then we're using water, which is holds its heat longer than air. So it's not really a furnace. It's a, you know, a fluid, which is a more high-efficiency type furnace.
So your root source of power then is electrical, heating this all up?
The, the main source for that system would be gas for the instant hot water heater. They don't make a good instant hot water electric yet.
Okay, I do believe, Mr. Chairman, there are some new zoning regulations coming out about fossil fuel regulation. Is that true?
I think we're still waiting on the Attorney General.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Hanlon, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I guess I was the one who primarily presented this to town meeting. What we have is a home rule petition. So the bylaw that passed town meeting approved in in November is subject to authorization by the legislature. And can't go forward and be legally binding until, unless and until that happens. And we're working with our legislative delegates now, our delegation to, to secure that, that approval. You may remember that the bylaw and the home rule petition were both the product of the Clean Energy Future Commission, which has been designing a net-zero policy for the, for the town, which is in the process of being adopted now. And this was one of the first items that they endorsed and as you know, town meeting endorsed as well. So I think right now you can say that, that it is now not a legal requirement. Wasn't a legal requirement before this application was filed. Will be a legal requirement if we succeed in obtaining the legislation that we are seeking, which is really essentially to avoid state preemption. But the policy underlying it is a power, is a policy of the town as part of its reaction to the challenge of climate change. And if, and to the extent to which the applicant seeks to align its own its own proposals with the policies that the town is working to deal with climate change, that this would be a subject matter that they might want to look into as well. I will point out that the ordinance or the bylaw that was enacted had an exemption for hot water heater in large buildings like this. had an exemption for hot water heater in large buildings like this, so that the only thing it would have affected is the, is heating and cooling.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Any further, Mr. Mills?
I'm all set, thank you.
Any other members of the board? Seeing none. Just wanted to just invite Marty Nova from Beta, if you have any questions in particular?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't have any questions right now. I'm really, it was really nice presentation, it was nice to see the project and, you know, how it fits in the neighborhood. So, and like, like, we were in the process of reviewing it, and we'll be prepared next time to talk about the, the traffic, and then after that, the civil and the stormwater, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll also turn to Ms. Lineama, I don't know if yourself or on behalf of your department, if you have any questions you had wanted to put forward.
Not a question, thank you.
Okay. And just to make sure I've covered everybody, Mr. Haverty, I don't know if you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jenny Raid, I, I don't have any further comments or questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. I believe there are other.
Chairman, Ms. Chapnik has her hand up, I think.
Does, get to her in just a second. So Ms. Chapnik, are you looking to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission?
I am.
Then I will recognize Susan Chapnik, who is the Chair of the Arlington Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the presentation. I just wanted to say that the Conservation Commission is looking forward to assisting the ZBA in responding and, and advising on some of the issues. I know we didn't talk about wetlands or stormwater tonight, however, some of the materials that were posted on Nova's agenda do address these, these items, and the commission would, would in the appropriate meeting be responding to them. I just wanted to raise one or two, just so all of us are, are on the same page and know they might be coming. One has to do with the requested waiver of the applicant to, to the local bylaw for Ryder Brook as a jurisdictional intermittent stream under the local bylaw and the Wetlands Protection Act. That's something that the commission will, would like to comment on. In, in addition, the, the stormwater systems, the Conservation Commission has been through, through our advocacy towards improving flood control, requiring of large projects to use the NOAA 14-plus precipitation data to size stormwater management systems. I just wanted to put that out there also as a, a heads up. And the, the other item I wanted to talk about is we did have the opportunity of having a working session with the applicant, which we appreciated, this happened in 2020 with the Conservation Commission. We made a recommendation there that the pedestrian pathway that's along Millbrook, and then there's a small greenway next to it of vegetation. We made a recommendation that be flipped, that the greenway and the vegetation be closer to the brook to be protective of the resource area and also as a better habitat, small habitat area. And the pedestrian area be pushed back a little further away. That was a recommendation by the commission.
Mr. Klein, Ms. Chapnik, we did get the message that the commission would like us to use the NOAA data in the stormwater analysis, and we, the engineers are using that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Chapnik. All right, with that, I will now open the meeting for public comment. Just to reiterate, public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing the decision. To provide for an orderly flow to the meeting, the chair will limit individuals' public speakers to three minutes each and use their time to provide comment related to topics discussed the hearing. The chair may grant additional time to allow answers for questions. Please note that there are multiple hearings scheduled for this project, and each hearing will have an opportunity for public comment. The chair also encourages the public to provide written comment to be reviewed by the board and included in the record. The procedure for requesting to speak will be the same as for previous hearings. Please select the raise hand feature from the participants tab on Zoom or now star nine on your phone to indicate you would like to speak. When called upon, please identify yourself by name and address. You'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions will be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps us to generate an accurate set of minutes. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed or the allocated time has been expended, the public comment period for this evening's hearing will be closed. As noted previously, there will be multiple hearings scheduled for this project, and each hearing will have an opportunity for public comment. And the board and staff and the applicant will do our best to show documents being discussed. If you'd like to have a specific document pulled up during your comments, please ask us to do so. I will go ahead and reopen the comment list, and Ms. Chapnik, I'm going to go ahead and lower your hand. So if you would like to, to address the board this evening, from the participants tab, please go ahead and use the raise hand feature or style not, star nine if you're on the phone. As of yet, I don't see anyone looking to address the board this evening. Leave a little extra time here for people. I'll scan through the pages here in case somebody's waving in their camera, but I don't see anybody waving in front of their camera either. Ms. Leroyer?
Hi, I didn't see the raise hand option on the participant panel. But, so my, my question was actually, do you have a schedule published yet of what topics are going to be discussed at which dates?
That is our very next topic.
Oh, okay. I'm very interested in the traffic and issues, and just want to be prepared for that.
Absolutely. Just a question, Pat, if you look on the participants tab, do you, is there a raise hand feature there? I'm a co-host, so I can't actually see.
Yeah, I can't hold more.
Mr. Revellak has raised a hand.
I don't see it.
I'm inclined, it's on the bottom left of the participants. If you open up your participants and make it a, a list on the right side of your screen, the raised hand is on the bottom left.
Okay.
And that's how I do it.
Okay.
Chairman, on, on my screen, it's not actually, it, it may be just the way I've, I've set up the view, but.
No.
You have to click on participants first.
Yeah, I did do that.
There should be on the, I've got it on the right-hand side.
I have mute me on one side and invite on the other.
Once you open up the participants, it opens up a sidebar, and there's a raise hand, yes, no, go slower, go faster.
I have the same thing Pat has, so I'm not seeing the raised hand either.
That's interesting, I, I have the same thing as Paul.
Well, members of public who wish to speak, if you want to turn on your camera and wave, we will keep an eye out for you if you're having trouble finding a. I do one last pass through here, looking through pictures. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment for this evening. Okay, and then I'll go ahead and share these comments. Okay, so this, we had a meeting. The applicant, you can see the list of attendees here, to discuss the process. So we are currently here at February 23rd, which is the hearing on architectural and site design, which we've just completed. The board has a conference, there's not the board, but those organizing the hearings, we have a discussion coming up to prepare for the March 16th hearing, so the next public hearing will be Tuesday, March 16th, where we will be just at 7:30 PM, where we'll be discussing the traffic impact assessment and peer review comments, the traffic impact assessment. Mr. Valarelli, do you know if we have any other hearing scheduled for that evening?
We don't, our next hearing is actually March 9th, a residential matter.
Okay.
So I think we're okay that evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So that, so the next public hearing on 1165 RMAAS AV will be on March 16th. And then the following hearing will be on Tuesday, March 23rd, also at 7:30 PM, where we'll be discussing stormwater, wetlands, riverfront aspects of the products, project, excuse me, with emphasis on Ryder Brook and the historic mill. And then after that, the next scheduled hearing is Tuesday, April 13th, where the board will review potential updates to previously discussed aspects of the project. And just for those who are following on the website, we understand that the zoning board's website on this project is out of date. We are working with our peer review consultants at Beta Group to institute a, a document management program so that we will have that updated in time for our next hearing. Okay. Stop, share on that, back to the agenda. Are there any other preparatory discussions on this before we adjourn for the evening?
Mr. Chairman, I assume we will discuss the landscaping at the March 23rd hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good. Okay, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn to March 16th? So. Who will continue to March 16th, second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Revellak.
Before motion to adjourn, do we need a motion to continue?
We are doing that right now.
Oh, okay.
May I accept that as a second to the motion to continue?
Yes, yes, you may.
I will do a roll call for the board. Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Ms. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. O'Rourke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Ms. Revellak?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, we are continued on this until Tuesday, March 16th at 7:30 PM. Well, thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience through the meeting. Officially wish to thank Valarelli and Vincent Lee for all their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording of the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of the proceedings, and as our understanding, the recordings made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. We would also like to thank members of staff at the Department of Planning and Community Development for their assistance in preparing for this and subsequent hearings. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.earlington MA.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, may I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Don't move by Mr. Hanlon, second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do a voice vote of the board, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Eyes have it, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night.